Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for October 17th. A call to the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mr. Jarama?
Here.
Mrs. Knoll?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Roan?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The invocation today will be given by Reverend Sheldon Walker, the Grace Episcopal Church. Reverend Walker, please come up and tell us a little bit about your church, since he's got a great history.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Yeah, Grace, we've been, we're right out the window there, so if you don't know where it is, just take a peek out the window. We just celebrated our 325th anniversary last year, so we're, I think, the oldest, literally the oldest business in Yorktown. So, we have services on Sunday morning at 8:00 and 10:15, and on our bulletins, we have a little motto that says, "Walking in Love and Welcoming All," and we really try to live by that in everything that we do. So, if you're looking for a new church home or just want to check us out, we'd love to have you. We also have services every Wednesday at noon, so folks who work up here in the, you know, in the village, I'd love for y'all to come join us at noon and have a little peace and respite during your busy week. It's always a service for public healing, so we pray for the needs of the church in the world every Wednesday, so we'd love to have you. And if you just want to stop by and say hello, come on by, my door's always open. In light of what's going on around our world and our country right now, I'd like to open with the prayer attributed to St. Francis, which I think many of us know, but I think it not only says the right things, but it gives us great comfort in God, so let us pray. "Lord, make us instruments of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is discord, union; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; where there is sadness, joy. Grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life." Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, would you please rise if you can for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
We have two today. The first one will be from the Lackey Clinic, excuse me, Clinic presentation, and Larry Trombo, you're here, and welcome. And the other one, by the way, will be from the Emergency Communications Update from Terry Hall, and Terry's here too. So, okay, Larry, you're on.
Yes. Well, thank you very much. Again, my name is Larry Trombo. I am the CEO of the Lackey Clinic, and with me tonight is Kim Spencer, and it's just a privilege, and it's a little intimidating, I feel like I'm briefing the Supreme Court here, so. For those of you that don't know, and I think most of you do, but Lackey Clinic's about seven minutes north of here on Old Williamsburg Road. We've been there for 28 years, and we started in a little church right near where our building is. I thought I'd start off tonight with a video that we used at our gala. We just had our 28th gala a couple of weekends ago, and I thought the patient stories that we have in the video could probably describe the outcome of what we do, and then I'll spend a couple of minutes just going over some facts unique to York County. Okay?
I've been to many clinics in my lifetime. I came from New York. Lackey to me is not just any clinic.
This place is almost like family because I see the same people every day, and I come in contact with the same people every day when I come here, you know, and they always have a smile on their face, so that always makes me feel like I'm welcome.
So, I came in, and this is when I met with Nurse Carol. I remember, I mean, I cried, I mean, I just spilled my guts, you know, to her, and she was so patient and loving and understanding. That was something I never experienced in any medical, you know, building.
Last November, it was a tough time for me, and I lost almost 16 pounds less than two months. And so, also, I noticed a cyst in my breast, which made me feel immensely anxious about it because my aunt passed away because of breast cancer at a very young age.
I was pulling the tree, and the limb swept the ladder out from underneath me, and when it swept it, I threw the chainsaw one way, and I actually landed on my feet, running. Didn't think anything of it. About five days in, I couldn't get out the bed.
I just came out of a severe case of pancreatic attack. Didn't know where to go. A friend recommended it. That was God sent.
My first experience was like, it was like I found something. I could feel a piece of heaven for me. It's like the way I describe it.
The lady had a patient first. She's on the phone, and she's talking to me. Okay, it really sounds like you have a blood clot. We don't have the ability to touch for that. You need to go to the doctor, get checked out for that. When I called the ladies at Lackey Clinic, now I'm in the mirror crying. I'm in so much pain.
As soon as I got in there, it all happened. They worked very hard, very, very hard. I was accepted.
After my first visit here, when I get some tests done, and I feel extremely relieved, no matter, like, whatever is going to happen, and they will be taking care of me well.
Here I am, I'm living out the most excruciating pain of my life, and then you tell me that all of a sudden, if it went to my heart, I was dead? When I got the ultrasound, and they confirmed it, now I'm in the care of this family that has Bible verses on the wall, that they have all the machines, and they have a facility, and I'm like, God, really?
I step aside, and I kind of look, and I see how the staff here actually cares about, you know, people that are coming through that door.
My piece of heaven that I found when I was in a rough place in my life, mentally and physically, and Lackey gave me that comfort, to say, "It's okay. I'll be okay."
I thank you, because without them, I probably wouldn't be here.
You saved a life. You saved mine. And I know those others, that Lackey saved the hell, the comfort.
When you're young and you're thinking about going into medicine, you have this picture in your mind of how it's going to be, and then you get out there, and it's nothing like you pictured. But then you come to Lackey Clinic, and you immediately recognize that this is exactly what you pictured, and you say, "Aha, this is it, this is the place," and the patients recognize it too.
We hear it all the time, there's something different about Lackey, and I would like to think that that's the spirit of a living Lord.
The patients tell the story way better than I could. Just so you know, and I think most of you do, the Lackey Clinic services are listed in front of you. We have eight uniquely different services, everything from the primary care through dental. We have this new thing called Virtual Urgent Care, and that's run by volunteer doctors that, we don't charge anything for that, but that any patient that lives in Virginia can call, make an appointment, call in and talk to a certified doctor, and sometimes they just need a refill, sometime they just need a diagnosis of rash or something like that. We do have an optometrist, and so we give everybody free glasses that goes through that program. We do have a low-cost medication program. We do around $10 million of drugs, and that's because the law requires pharmaceutical manufacturers to donate a certain percent of their branded protected drugs, and so we can get the latest and greatest stuff that you necessarily can't get. You know, most of us can get generic drugs, but we can get branded drugs for our patients. Behavioral counseling, we do telehealth. Thirty percent of our appointments are telehealth, and that's because it actually helps the patient. They don't have to drive, they don't have to take care of childcare, and it helps on time. And then we have spiritual care. So who's our target market? I know this graph's a little bit complicated, but on the left there is, we have the federal poverty level, and it starts at zero and goes up to 138%, and that's where Medicaid takes over. Virginia went to Medicaid in 2019. And then there's a gap, and the gap is where we focus our patient, our target patients, and above that gap, a 300% of federal poverty level, most people can afford or have insurance, and so that gap is closely aligned with the ALIS population, and the ALIS is a term that United Way uses. It's a little more specific than federal poverty level. It actually gets pretty specific by region, and ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. And the data for York County is that graph there, and the top graph says that ALIS population, 7,229 households are actually under that, which would fit into the gap. So, there is a big need in York County. Who are these people that are asset limited income constrained? Well, this is Virginia as a whole, and, you know, they start with a lot of people that work in this area, fast food, encounter workers, retail, cashiers. That shows how many in tens of thousands. It shows you the median wage, and then it also shows the percent of those type of workers that fall into the, again, people that would qualify for Lackey. And I guess my point is, there's a huge need, and we're there to serve, and we all know these people. We do have an eligibility, and the eligibility is just so that we can qualify for the drugs, we can get the charity care agreements through the hospitals, and that we make sure that the money that's donated or granted to us is used for people that need it, and it goes pretty high. A family of six, 120,000 could qualify for, again, all the programs I showed you in Slide 1. And here's the slide that I'm really proud of to show you all, as supervisors. We have about 14% of our population, 192 people, are York County residents. There's 68 of the residents used our Virtual Urgent Care. In other words, they got a free visit with, consult with a doctor. But the bottom line is, it's almost $2 million of value when we add up the medical, dental, pharmaceutical, and behavioral health of value. So, I guess my message to you is, first of all, thank you for your support, because we do count on it, and hopefully you see a huge value in having us in the community and the return of investment. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Chad, you any questions?
More a comment. You do great work. Please keep it up. I've been following you. I went to high school with the Shaw's kids, Travis and Ashley, and been very familiar in watching the Lackey Clinic grow and prosper over the years.
Sheila?
And I've watched you grow and prosper from the very beginning. When you first broke the ground to build what you have today and how you've expanded, I thank you very much for the tour that you gave me. We spent over an hour, and I was amazed at how much you do for what you get from us.
It was our privilege. And I'll invite any of the, anybody in the community that wants to come down, or anybody up here. We love giving tours, we love highlighting what we do, we love getting to know you, we love the questions that you ask, because it allows us to truly demonstrate, you know, who we are.
Steven?
Yeah, thank you for your service there. Certainly, the video shows the impact that you make to the community. Couple of questions for you. First of all, the Virtual Urgent Care and the Telehealth Services seem pretty similar. What differentiates the two of them?
Yeah, so, think about a normal doctor visit, where you go in and get checked with the doctor, and maybe you have high blood pressure, and they put you on medication. The telehealth would be, you don't have to come back in three months for us to recheck it. We can just call you and say, "How are you feeling?" And you could take it by your own monitor. So, the telehealth would replace a normal in-person visit. The Virtual Urgent Care is for non-patients that say, you know, "I woke up today, I feel really bad. I don't want, I don't have $100 to go to an urgent care, but I can go and book an appointment and talk to a doctor, even if I'm not a patient."
Okay, all right, all right. That's good, thank you. And looking at your graph, looks like there's this pretty consistent uptick since 2018 in the folks that fill that gap role. Do you have any projections, forecast for the next five years, what you expect?
I think, you know, COVID and a bunch of other things, and the economy maybe caused that uptick, that more people fell into the ALIS, but I have no projection of what's...
Okay, that's great, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I've got District 1, and I'm not quite sure what percentage of that 14% of the county's population frequents the clinic, but when I do bounce into somebody who has had that service, I can tell you, and I've been on this board now for 28 years, it's always positive, so please keep up the work.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, it's great. Everything you're doing down there just hits at the heart of, you know, who we are as Americans, and trying to take care of the people that are less fortunate. You want to introduce your staff that's with you here?
Well, I just have Kim Spencer. She's really the brains behind the operation. She takes care of raising over $1.1 million, does all the tours, runs the gala, and in her free time, she's running our Christmas party, Halloween party, all the stuff. So, without her, you know how that is. Anybody that has a good staff knows how indispensable somebody like Kim is.
Well, you said it was just, she was just, it's just Kim, but look, I'm telling you why I went down there and saw the, she gave you the tour of the facility, and I was very impressed with everyone I met, and it was just, it was really awesome. Now, one question I do have for you, it was kind of mentioned in the video, the equipment. And I know you acquire equipment kind of a different route than most hospitals. Can you tell us a little bit about that, please?
Well, actually, we've been fortunate that our building's paid for. We're fortunate that we can get, we have a lot of the latest equipment. We're fortunate, if we do have a need, I write a grant, and there are very generous grantors around here, and so we have the latest optometry, the latest dental, the latest medical. We don't want for a lot, and that's just a reflection of, I think, our reputation and the fact that people want to give to an organization that hopefully has the outcomes you saw in the video.
It was a time when I know some of the hospitals would, when they would upgrade stuff, they would give you some of their equipment, and that you would, and it was a way of, you know, not just recycling, but it was a way of sharing, so that you made sure that you guys were keeping up with the modern technology, and I thought that was awesome. Well, thank you both for your services, and I do recommend, as supervisors, if you haven't been down there to see it, get the tour. Remember the last time we were there, you were celebrating the opening of a new dental, the new dental area, and it's now its old hat, it's been down there for quite a few years, and it, but it's still impressive to see all that. And thank you to the doctors that, and the nurses, and everybody participates in making the Lackey Free Clinic a success. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am. Come up to the podium, so people can hear you.
I just really, you know, some of our real superheroes of the clinic is our volunteers. We have the most amazing volunteer program. Just in our last 12 months, they gave over 14,000 hours, which equaled up to about a half a million dollars worth of services. So, we're just a family of people that gather together, that give, that share, that do the work that you saw. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next, we will hear from Terry Hall, the Director of Emergency Communications.
They say there's a future in technology, but I don't know that I believe that.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak tonight about our 911 Center. I've been fortunate to be here for many years and work with many of the board members for many years as well, so I hope you enjoy our presentation tonight. So, what we're going to do tonight is just kind of give you a brief overview. As y'all know, we've, are in the process of working on our consolidation with James City County. We came before you several months ago to talk about it, and this is just going to be a brief update. So, on July the 17th, it became official that we consolidated. The James City employees transition over became York County employees. Our staff and James City staff worked tireless hours to make sure that everything, everyone was made whole, and the transition was seamless to the citizens and visitors of all of our region, and I'd have to say it went off without a hitch as far as our transfer. What I want to do is, one of the things that became evident with so many visitors in our center here recently, not only contractors, but citizens group, and even some of y'all, many of you have been in there many times, is folks really don't get to take a look at what our 911 Center looks like. So, this is a recruitment video that we put together that we've been using a lot, because we've been hiring a lot of folks here recently, that I figured it would show. Now, it doesn't have James City in it. We're planning on trying to redo this after the first of the year, but James City, York, Picousen, and Williamsburg are all one communication center now, so it's only a couple of minutes long.
I became a dispatcher because I wanted to make a difference in somebody's life. I do love my job because I feel as if with every phone call that I can make a difference. My job is very important because everybody who does call in needs something, and we're here to provide that for them and assist them with that, no matter what it is. At the end of the day, I always want to make sure that the person on the other end of the line, whatever they need is met, and also my officers, my medics, my firefighters, animal control, everybody on that side, bringing them home to their families and their loved ones at the end of the day.
I love this job because I feel like I'm making a difference every single day. My job is extremely important to me. I know that a lot of my family know what I do, and they're proud of me, and I'm proud of getting to do this job every single day. At the end of every shift, I feel like I've been able to make a difference in someone's life, no matter what calls we've had. I feel like I've done something good and been able to pay it forward.
I became a dispatcher because I always wanted to be able to help people. My favorite thing about my job is being that person that someone's calling to when they're in a crisis. It makes me feel good when I help someone to know that I can render aid without physically being there, and allowing officers and first responders to also come help you with that family at the end of the day.
I do love my job. I really enjoy helping people. I truly enjoy talking to different people every day. I love unpredictability, the fast pace. I'm glad it's not a routine, the same thing every day type of job. At the end of every day, I feel accomplished. I know when I leave work, no matter what has happened that day, that I have done my best, and regardless of the outcome of the calls, I know that I have the potential to create the best outcome possible.
I love my job. It is the most exciting thing to do. Every day I wake up, I'm glad that I have this job, and I get to come in here and help save lives. My favorite thing about my job is that it's exhilarating, innovative, it keeps me on my toes every day. Every day I walk in this building, I'm challenged, and I learn something new every day. I also experience something different all the time. My job is extremely important to me. It is a job that has a high liability, and it's very important that we take it extremely serious and make sure that all of our public safety and first responders go home safe that night, and also the citizens of the city and the counties are being treated well and with great customer service.
If you like helping people become a dispatcher, it could be good for you.
The advice I'd give anyone trying to become a dispatcher is just try the job. You'd be surprised what you can do, and you get to feel like you're making a difference in your community.
In my opinion, to be a good dispatcher, the most important quality to me is having a good sense of humor, that bubbly personality. It's important to be able to just bring happiness into a place that can have negativity around you.
This kind of job is that kind of job where you always have somebody in need of assistance, so you always have an opportunity to make somebody's day better.
Yeah, if you want to become a dispatcher, definitely apply. Try it out, come down, sit with us for a little bit, experience what we do day to day, and change somebody's worst day of their life to hopefully something better.
So, with that, I'm going to start a very brief presentation. Again, I spoke about being before the board many times. We share a regional radio system with James City County and now Gloucester as well, and we started that regional relationship in 2003, 2004. We have built and maintained a state-of-the-art regional communication system since that time. Knock on wood, it's never been down. The system is very well maintained, and we're going to continue it for another 20 years. We have regional 911 call handling equipment. Although James City was a separate center, and York County was up here, we shared the technology so that we had total redundant backup between James City County and York County, so that we would never be down. Next Generation 911 is an initiative that's been started by the Commonwealth of Virginia several years ago. There's about a $65 million investment in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we have received and applied, we have applied and received for grants for York County, James City County as well, so we're now merging those grant opportunities together to complete that project at next calendar year. We had received grants, and we had one of the first CAD-to-CAD, computer aided dispatch to computer aided dispatch centers. What we did that for is, if you placed a call in James City and they needed, their medic was tied up, and they needed our medic, our computers were linked together so that they could see what was available, and we'd understand what to dispatch. So, that program was very successful. You see the news a lot about people using whole blood and talking about automatic mutual aid. York County and James City County and the city of Williamsburg have had automatic mutual aid for well over 20 years. It works exceptionally. What that means in plain language is, we send you the closest medic, fire truck, et cetera. You don't care what color it is, you care about the equipment and the services that they put on there. So, for us, it looked like a natural migration was to follow with the consolidation of our 911 Center. So, in June 6th of 2023, and June 13th, we did presentations to both of our boards, and we talked about them, about the reasons that we wanted to consolidate, and we had some improved efficiencies. So, what I'm going to do now is just cover where we stand with these. One of the items that we discussed was decreased response time, improved coordination and communications between all first responders. This has been very successful. Everything I'm going to talk about from here to the end of the presentation is a work in progress. Every day we get better at it, every day we have success stories. I want to talk about the decreased response times for a moment. If you have an event such as the big mulch fire, brush fire that they had up in James City County that took 10 pumpers, all those pumpers came out of York County, James City, Williamsburg. We're able to put all of that information together in our CAD system and send mutual aid response to those. We had a pretty severe medic call that involved a cutting in the upper end of the county. The closest unit there was a James City unit, not a York County unit, even though it was in York County. First people on the scene were two James City police officers that applied tourniquets and saved someone's life as a response to this. So, this works every single day. Eliminate the transfer of misrouted calls. We had a decent percentage of calls. When you dial 911, standing here, you're most likely going to get York County. If you're down on the beach, it's a slot machine. You could get Gloucester, or you could get York County. So, by having everybody in one communication center, we have virtually eliminated Williamsburg, Picousen, James City, and York County calls going to the wrong, to the wrong locations. They now go to the proper 911 Center, and this saves lives. Optimizing staff levels. I'm going to tell you, this is a work in progress. When we brought James City folks over here, we had a staffing issue when they came over, and we needed to hire 15-plus people. So, when you hire a dispatcher, not unlike hiring a police officer or firefighter, you have a training process. It takes six months to a year to train a dispatcher. Nationally, 25% of the people that you hire don't make it. Our rates are much better than that, and our folks are doing well, but it takes a while to come out of this. Our rates are much better than that, and our folks are doing well, but it takes a while to come out of this. Economies of scale, increased grant opportunities. Couple of months ago, we came and showed you we had a $1 million grant to do some consolidation work. The Commonwealth of Virginia, state and federal folks are given more grants and more points to those that are consolidated, so we plan on continuing to leverage that. Implementation of advanced technologies. Next Generation 911 is one of them that we're talking about. We're currently working with Sheriff Montgomery on several other programs that he'd like to launch that's going to enable people in the field to be able to hear the 911 calls as they're going on as well. So this is a work in progress, and it's going to happen after the first year when we launch our next generation call handling equipment. And $250,000 of that $1 million grant that we applied for and received, we have to use for Next Generation 911 and emerging technologies. Migrate to one CAD system is a work in progress. I would say if someone said, "What is the biggest issue that you have right now with consolidation?" It's working with disparate technologies. So James City County had one brand of CAD system, and York, Picocson, Williamsburg had another brand. So if you go into the centers now, we've had to teach our folks how to use James Cities, and James City has had to use ours. We're in a migratory path. Between now and the end of the month, we'll be transitioning to the fire over to our CAD system, and about the first of the year, we'll be transferring law, so that problem will be rectified. Records management is kind of a different beast. Records management, the mobile data terminals that are in the vehicles and how they do their reports and so on, there's a lot of independence, and folks want to maintain their independence. The CAD system that we have allows you to have disparate RMS systems that are linked to these. So that technology, everyone's still going to be able to enjoy what they have today. Redundancy. I think one of the biggest things that York and James City have been able to offer, not only here but across the Commonwealth, is the fact that we've always had a backup center. Well, on February the 22nd, when James City County had a catastrophic failure of equipment, the center on the right went dark, and the whole room was charged with smoke. They have just brought this back online as far as the repairs in the last week, and between now and the end of the calendar year, this will become our backup center. The screen that you see on the left is a backup center that in working with our county and our IT department, and my folks and some of the other vendors, in 48 hours, we talked to Public Works. This is the Public Works conference room. We turned that into a backup 911 Center. It was very important not to go without a backup 911 Center. So a three-minute walk or a one-minute drive, our Public Works Center has a live 911 Center there that if something happened in our building, we could go there and not lose any services. So we're very proud of that. Where do we go from now? Well, our path forward, we have a building renovation that's ongoing. We've renovated bathrooms. When you add a lot of people to a one-toilet stall, you've got to renovate the bathroom, so that's been underway. We've completed that. Building renovations actually started today for the minor addition that's going on the back of our facility. Next Generation 911 emerging technology is underway. Equipment's being put on order to bring those things in. That'll happen the first to mid next year. Hiring of staff is a work in progress. I think we're down to two left to hire. It is a tedious process. Back in the day, you would advertise and have 125 people a week. Now you're lucky if you get 15, and by the time you screen them and look at who show up, we're very particular of who we pick to be dispatchers. It's a, it's a unique individual that can task, that can be tasked with doing this job. So that's a work in process. Training, it takes six months to a year to train. Not only do you have to learn all the disparate technologies, you have to learn all the protocols. You have to learn medical. You have to be able to do what's called EMD, emergency medical dispatch, where you give CPR instructions over the phone, technology for pinging phones for law enforcement. These are things that happen every single day in our communication center and are going on right this very minute. Migrate emerging technologies is pretty interesting. Everything that you're hearing about now is cybersecurity. Well, we have to consider cybersecurity in every component that goes into our center because we can't open our system up and have some type of virus come in and take it down. So migrating all these technologies, it's not as easy as just going to a website or having a vendor come in and do a demo. They have to be integrated into our existing systems and make sure that they're safe for our continued operation. This is probably going to take the longest amount of time, merging of policies, procedures, protocols, and practices. Everybody does things just a little bit, a little bit different. All of our Sheriff Montgomery and our chiefs, they are bending over backwards to make sure that we're making these meld together, but it's a work in progress and takes a while to do it as we not only meld this, but we have to bring warrants into one center. So it's a very tedious process to go through this. And then branding our logo. What do you call the center? You don't want to answer the phone saying, "York, Picocson, Williamsburg, James City County, Regional 911." You've already used up half your time for answering the calls. So how we're going to brand, we're a work in process, and that's a lower priority for it right now. We just go with 911, and they figure out they've got the right place. So that's working for us very well, but we have committees that are working on this and putting together logos and so on so that we can move forward after that. And then it's anticipated to be July 21st of 2024. Why July 21st? From the time that we started this process, my goal was six months to a year. Our process went underway July the 21st, hot and heavy, so that's why we have it pinned down to that point. And I would say that right now, we're on track to do it. I've got to recognize our folks. The center would be nothing without the people under the headset. And when James City came over here, you know, if you read Facebook, there's a lot of controversy. I can tell you, on July 17th, at midnight, that went away. We have an excellent staff. James City added to that excellent staff, and I'm going to recognize some of the staff members that are here. If y'all would stand up, the folks that are here tonight. They're the heroes that make it work, 24/7, 365. So thanks to them. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey Walt, any questions?
Yeah, I've got, I spend time at night lying in bed thinking about, well, more recently, what happened in Israel. And my question is, we've got all this wonderful technology, and I'm so happy to hear that. And this may be classified, so you may not be able to answer it. I mean, I got, I got to think. I got to believe that the state, the federal government, the state, and right on down to the localities have thought through scenarios, okay? So I'm sleeping at 2:00 in the morning with my wife, all right? And all of a sudden, what do I hear? Let's say it's something akin to what the people who were attacked in Israel last week. What's the response? What's, what's, what's the counter? How am I going to know what the heck is going on if not but for your office?
Well, I'm going to take a stab at answering it and telling you that we have a large group of people in emergency management that manage these events. If we had an event like that, first off, our policies or every emergency manager is, woke up, they're on a conference call, they're on Zoom, they're on cell phones, they're doing whatever they need to to get together. We have a very robust service. That's like a reverse 911 that we can send out massive notifications for. And if it's a larger scale, the federal government and the state government have access to what's called EAS, the Emergency Alert System. Some of you may remember just last week, FEMA did a national, you know, test on it. So there are ways to make the notifications. As far as the things that would happen in the center, our center, it processes information. Nothing starts and nothing stops in a 911 Center. We take information out and disseminate it to the first responders, and sometimes those first responders have to then open their emergency operations center. So we do have an infrastructure in all of our governments, you know, with our emergency management staff that are keyed up to work with those, and they have connections into the state, and the states have connection into the feds.
Almost answers my question. Where do I go with my wife and all the citizens who live around me, day in and day out? What happens to us? Do we, do we have any plan that, that says this is our, the location to go to once the attack is recognized and your communications people have put the word out? Then what? Do I get out of bed?
I'll answer it a little broader. We do have emergency shelters. They're set up around the counties and the cities, and based on where and what the nature of the event is, shelters could be open. All of those, they don't come out of 911. They actually come out of our emergency management departments for each one of those agencies. And they are working with each other and in tune are working with the State Fusion Center, who are in tune, working with the federal government.
So I'm glad to hear that there's a lot of coordination going on.
There, there is, and it happens quickly.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Stephen?
So, you know, I'm always impressed with, with the 911 Center. There's impressive technology. The people using that technology is impressive. I know your office, your department does a lot of, have done a lot of tip-of-the-spear implementations over the years that have become practices for Virginia and the nation as well, so kudos to that. And, you know, I got a little bit of background in some of that technology, and your data center is impressive. So one question I have is, how future-proof is the technology that we have today? Are we at the cusp of running out of hitting that technology envelope? Or do we have years of service left before we're going to hit a problem?
So the answer to all of that is yes. It's emerging, okay? And I'm going to give you this, that whenever I go in and look at what we need to do next, we use FEMA's COOP Plan, Continuative Operations. And the first thing that you do is a candidate risk assessment. You know, what is the likelihood that we're going to have a cyber attack, you know, on our two-way radio system? It's high because it's vulnerable. You take that out. So we apply different patches and softwares and coding to that under our contracts several times a year. Same thing with 911. But our CAD system is a computer-aided dispatch. It's not a computer dispatch. So you have different levels of security based on what you're doing. The rule of thumb that I follow, we keep everything as a closed network and no one can get into it. And that's kind of, I would say, cutting edge. A lot of the vendors want to dial in remotely and do diagnostics. Well, you open up for them, you open up for everyone.
All right. Second question. Thanks for that. Second question. You've shown over the years how consolidation is very beneficial, most recently with the James, James City County consolidation. What is the upper limit of that consolidation? Are we there now?
We're there.
Can we take in a one? That's, we can't really expand beyond what we're doing here still being measured?
Well, I'm never going to say never. If I was younger and, you know, somebody came in and they had a bunch of money and they said, "Hey, let's build this giant center." But our facility is at its capability right now, and it's not expandable to hold anymore. Now, we do have, we provide backup services to some other 911 centers, and we have that capability for short term, but we do not have any way to bring in anyone longer term.
Got you. Okay, all right. Thanks. Keep up the good work, you and your team. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Sheila?
I think you've had enough questions. I think, Terry, I'm always amazed when I go visit you. And ladies in the audience, thank you so much for what you do. And I'm glad that you've enjoyed the training, and I'm glad that you feel that what you do is worthwhile because it certainly is, and it keeps our citizens safe. And Terry, hats off to you always for what you have been able to accomplish.
Thank you, Mrs. Dalton.
Jan?
Mr. Hall, I heard you say that we were down 15 dispatchers?
We were actually down 18 dispatchers at one point in time.
And we've, we've overcome that?
We are overcoming it. You, again, Mr. Green, you know, it takes six months to a year, and the candidate pool that we all have in public safety is sparse. So it, it is a challenge to hire, but due to the staff back here, there have been no calls missed, no delay in service. We've had people standing calls and so on. So we're in, we're in good shape, and we're getting in better shape every day. We have had four of the people that we have hired released from training now that were in various stages in James City or in our organization as well. So we're coming out of it, and every month we'll come out of it more. And again, should be fully staffed and so on by July of next year.
Has their center, it seems very state-of-the-art. Has it received any recognition or awards from?
Yes, sir. We've received Governor's Technology Award. We've received awards from the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials International, SafeCom. We've, we've had a fair amount of awards for some of the, some of the technologies that we developed. And one of the things Mr. Roan was interested in when we were there, you know, if you have an alarm system at your house, ADT, Honeywell, et cetera, one of the third-party alarm systems, back in the old day, when the alarm would go off, it would call Honeywell or ADT or Vector, whoever, somewhere in the country, and they'd look at it and say, York, Virginia, York, South Carolina, York, Pennsylvania, York, Maine, and they hopefully would pick the right one. Well, that could be 10 or 12 minutes before we would get an emergency call. So we worked out a protocol, working with inlets, the FBI basically, so that we could use their processing, and we developed a program that's called ASAP that links those directly into us. So simultaneously, when Honeywell, ADT, and Vector are getting those, we get them on our CAD system displayed at the same time. It shaves 10, 15 minutes off of some of the calls. So we're very proud of some of those, but that's just one. And hey, Mr. Green?
Several years back, several homeowners associations and different groups around the county asked me if they could tour the facility, and you were very gracious in setting that up and was very well received by the groups. We had to stop that during COVID. Are we back to doing public tours? And if so, who might they speak to to get a tour of this facility?
So they can email us, you know, at our email address. I'm Terry Hall. I'm the director there. You can send us an email, or you can call in on the non-emergency line of 757-890-3621, and we'll have somebody get back and set it up. I don't think there's a week and a half goes by that we're not doing a tour for someone.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So Terry, I see in a lot of the pictures, you know, we see the person at the console, and that's the only person we see in the whole room. So do you get, there's a, do you have a lot of 911 dispatchers in at one time?
We have, our, our staffing level is 15.
At a time?
Right now, for max, and we're sometimes down to 10, 11, 12. We have a very sophisticated analytics program that we can kind of look at the weather pattern and traffic and holidays, and we can staff up or down based on that. We also have a very robust on-call program so that if we get busy, we can staff up in a very short period of time. And, you know, 40 to 60 hours a week, we also have all of our senior staff that all came from the floor. So there are buttons hidden in the room, and they can fill five, six, seven seats on a moment's notice.
So how many hours a day does a dispatcher work?
12 hours a day.
12 hours.
They work 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
And they get, so they do that for how many days?
They do like, every other weekend, they get a three-day weekend. It's a program that we've just started up, and I would mess it up if I tried to explain it.
Right. Well, just kind of the description of the dispatchers, and I see the three ladies here and the lady over here. When I was, in my younger life, I was in their traffic controller. And you go into a dark room, and you got these scopes in front of you, and, you know, the blimps flying around, or I say blimps, little picture, little dots on the, on the scope, and you just, you know, your stomach's in a knot the whole time, and all of a sudden, eight hours would go by. And, you know, what happened? You know, if somebody's tapping you on the shoulders, time to go home. And so I got a picture, that's my image of the dispatcher. You're sitting there, you're waiting for the next one, and then the next one, and then the next one. So it's a pretty challenging job, and I know it's very stressful. And we want to really thank you guys. And Terry, you've just been the champ in leading all this stuff, but thank you very much for all the great work you do for York County.
Yes, sir, and thanks for all y'all's support over the years as well.
Thank you. Okay, now let's move on to citizen comment period. I will call the people and the names of which we received the request for us to speak. Remember, you got three minutes. The green light will start when you give us your name and address. Yellow light gives you 30 seconds before your period of time runs out. The red light is, that's it, okay? So that'll be your three minutes. So start off with Shirley Cooper.
Well, hi there. How are you? I came to tell you what, okay, I'm Shirley Cooper. I now reside at 342 Curtis Tignor Drive in Newport News, Virginia. And I will just tell you that I used to be on this board of supervisors, sitting in Mr. Thomas Shepherd's seat, and I came to praise you. And I came to tell you great things, and one- And I came to tell you great things and wonderful things about you, because I think it's time that everybody know what a fabulous board of supervisors you are. And you really are. I was here in '74 to '81 when we were putting sewer in York County, and that was hard. And I was here when we started zoning, and that was hard. And I was here doing those kinds of things that you would build on. But there is no finer board of supervisors in anywhere that I've ever been in than you are. I can't think of a wonderful town like this one that you haven't had your hands on, that you haven't made wonderful, and there's no way that Yorktown could be any prettier than it is today. You are to be applauded. And I mean that with everything in my heart. I really mean that. And I thank you, Mr. Chad Green, because he's going to be sitting in the very seat, the very seat that I served in the General Assembly of Virginia. You're going to have to sit in my chair.
Be a little bit bigger.
That's going to be, that's going to be hard, but you're going to be sitting in my chair. And Ms. Sheila Knowles, I am so proud of you, honey. It would have been a pleasure to have served on this board with you. Wouldn't that be mighty fun? It just didn't happen that way, but you came on after I came off. We had to blow sand on the beach. It went away every year because of all the weather and all of that stuff. And sewer was incredibly bad in this county. And so those kinds of initial things, I indeed was a part of. And I did a lot on the state level as well. And what I've come to do to you tonight is to thank you deeply and to share with all these people out here, you just don't realize what a wonderful board of supervisors you have. Most of you have served together for about 20-some years. And now, that's saying a lot, too. I have to present to you a gift. I did this with my own hands. I did this of the beach that you have preserved, and I now present to you, and I don't know exactly how to do it, but Sharon Owens said she would hang it somewhere in this courthouse, and you know she's good at hanging things in this courthouse. And God bless you. And I've said enough.
Thank you very much. Hey, can you, I'll go down here.
A lot of people don't realize.
You did that. Yeah, oh, it's wonderful. Oh, Shirley, that's just gorgeous. Show, show everybody.
I got a grand, look, the Waterman's Museum across the river. Yes, I paint, I painted since I was nine years old.
Oh.
And Jamestown has one, they have it already hanging. The Victory Center has two, they have it already hanging. And I proudly give this to you, Mr. Shepherd, your wonderful chair.
Thank you. Right now, if anybody can see it, you can, hopefully, I'll set it right about here.
Yes, so we can see it.
And finally, a whole nice pen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Carol Edlow.
My name is Carol Edlow, and I live at 103 Hale Circle in the Riverwalk Town subdivision in Yorktown.
Welcome.
I am speaking again concerning the urgent, clear, and present danger at the intersection of Guzley Road and Route 238 Old Williamsburg Road. We have news to report regarding this matter, and I am opening for Wayne. The Sheriff's Office in the person of Ron Montgomery has met with us, and the situation is moving toward remediation. Thank you for your assistance in this matter. Your kind attention and expertise, along with that of former state legislator, the Honorable Shirley Cooper, have helped hasten this process. For that, we are appreciative. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Arthur Edlow.
My first time up here, so I'm not quite sure what, what buttons to push.
You don't push any buttons, you just talk.
Just talk. I'm not going to start, talk long. I just want to say thank you, you all, for listening to us. A lot of times, people like us, everyday folks, we come and we get before people such as yourself, and we get, oh, I can't talk to them. But you guys made it so we could speak, and we want to thank you on that, because what you have made it happen, that we're going to get that Old Williamsburg-Guzley Road section fixed. We're confident of that, because of you guys. I would call out certain people, but I don't want to eliminate anybody. But we are thankful. And we've got another speaker coming for, before, rather, after me, and he's going to give you a better update. Thank you.
And Mr. Edlow, you live at 103 Hale Circle?
103 Hale Circle.
Okay, thank you, sir. Maureen Moss.
Maureen Moss, 224 Nelson Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. It's been 21 years since I stood before this board, and some of you are still here. And I was scared then, and I am scared now, but for very different reasons. The first time I came before the board was for a personal request for a special-use permit for a small business. It was granted, and for that, we will always be grateful. We closed our business after 11 years, but have wonderful memories of having an opportunity to have been a part of the business community here in the village. My fear back then was about speaking in front of you, and although I still feel the same nervousness, this, I'm here tonight because I fear for the future of our beautiful and historic village. I strongly believe that Princess Cruise Lines coming to Yorktown will have a long-term negative effect on both the character and overall health of Yorktown. The environmental impact alone is reason enough to question whether this is a good idea or not. Yorktown has done so much to make the beach area welcoming and a real beach destination for families, that it is hard to understand how the impact of a large cruise ship with a history of environmental non-compliance was not considered more seriously. And if it was and ignored, then we have every reason to be concerned. Once our waters are no longer swim-friendly, it will be almost impossible to recover, and what a loss that would be. The understanding of a good bit of the community is that the ships will be far away, and if only small tender boats actually come to our county piers, and if it's only a couple of times a year, it won't be a problem. I think most of us here in this room know that this is not what the plan is. The plan for the Waterman's Museum to build a dock for Princess Cruise to tender to, and then ultimately dock the ships paid for by taxpayer money and Princess Cruise's, is only known to a relatively small number of people. And I think this is the way that the county wants it to be. Once Princess Cruise Lines has a stake in a private property, it will be almost impossible to change course, even when the negative consequences to Yorktown are fully felt. At that time, you as a board will be able to genuinely say that there is nothing you can do. And maybe this is your hope. Please reconsider your position on this critical issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Moss.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Herb Moss. I live 224 Nelson Street, New Yorktown. And I have a very brief, more of a request than comments, but I ask this board to fulfill its responsibility to the citizens of York County by spearheading a more deliberative and robust review process of the Princess Cruise project. Beginning by incorporating and involving the community in a visioning process that looks beyond the possible short-term financial gains, and seriously considers the long-term negative impacts this venture can have on Yorktown. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Steve Kennedy.
Steve Kennedy, 104 Penn Drive. Also vouched president of the Conserve York County Foundation. That's at conserveyorkcounty.org. Please check out the October 10 debate. It is unedited for uratification, for all to see. Feedback was overwhelmingly positive, and we again wish to thank Sheriff Montgomery and his sheriffs, and so many others that helped to put on a very successful evening. It was also a pleasure working with Chris Sixx, managing editor of WY Daily. By the way, for all those nattering nabobs out there, everyone was invited. We understand it was a busy time, and some of you could not be present. In addition, by the way, Mr. Sixx has lots of experience with Sunshine Laws Counselor. Maybe, maybe tap his brain a little bit along the way. I felt like I was sitting next to Edward R. Murrow for the evening. So he's a fair and balanced guy. So again, we have lots more questions that we did not get around to, actually a binder full. We have staff pouring through those. We may send some of those to you. You have three in your inbox right now. Next topic, fiscal matters. Picking up on some of the themes from that evening, economic development from your comp plan, the 2019 Comp Plan Draft, page five. Bottom talks about the Economic Development Authority, all their wonderful work. Then to page 13, moving things along. In recent years, quote, "The concept of placemaking has emerged as a strategy for enhancing the quality of life." Beautiful. Best example of placemaking, quote, "In York County is the Riverwalk Landing, not far from here." Next one, quote, "On a smaller scale, it's Beal's Brew Pub Development, which though not publicly owned, was initiated by the EDA and involved the expenditure of public funds." Anyone had a beer at Beal Brewery recently? I drove by it, still empty, still a big problem. Check out the debate. Somebody quoted that there was actually over 512,000 spent cost, sold for $400,000. We're going the wrong way in that equation, lady and gentlemen. The perception you've created is it's heads you win, tails we lose, we the taxpayer with taxpayer dollars. Next up, article in Virginia Gazette by a gentleman named Ben Swenson. September 13th was the article. The topic was the pottery. For time's sake, as we're running down here, quote, "When she," I think she is Ms. Castle, who I'm assuming is noble and does wonderful work here, shared the original letter with the planning commission in August. Microsoft Word automatically changed the date. One more time, Microsoft Word changed the date on a Word document. Where's the compliance oversight on that, Counselor? It's a good thing you're retiring, Mr. Morgan, because there's a lot more questions we have than answers. I would like the FOIA requests on every Word document she's done from January 19th to August 11th. By the way, lots more to say there. Thank you. See you soon. Happy Halloween. Watch your email inbox. Kennedy out.
Betsy Taylor.
Betsy Taylor, 111 Kiskiakwa, Yorktown. Thank you for this opportunity. Am I, can you hear me now? Last Friday was a glorious day in Yorktown. The weatherman cooperated, the river was smooth, every flower, every leaf was perfect along Riverwalk. It was amazing. I was out walking, and I walked down to see the excitement of the ship swinging at anchor out there. It was mind-boggling, and the tenders were going back and forth. I also spotted what I thought was a school of porpoise out there, and, I mean Dalton, yeah, porpoise. My family will tell you I have a thing about them. So I started down the ramp towards the gazebo, and I stopped. There was a sign, no flammable liquids, no caustic liquids, no firearms, no gunpowder, no sharp objects, et cetera, et cetera. Nothing said, "Don't enter." Nothing said, "Secure it area." Okay, I had my keys and I had my phone. That's it. I was intent. I was almost to the gazebo, and this voice boomed out, "Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to leave." I didn't know where it came from. I turned, and there was a very important guard. She had a badge and a sidearm, I believe, and she repeated herself. Well, I had my keys and my phone. I decided I was not going to buck her. So I turned around and went back and sat down on the bench and just watched. And as I said, the tenders were coming and going. I was sort of stunned at that approach, that encounter. And I looked, and there were no pleasure boats, no boats that we normally see in our local waters. Yorktown looked very welcoming last Friday. It looked welcoming to the people coming off of the ship. It was not welcoming to the residents, to the taxpayers, to your constituents. I was told that that was an international port of call, and I had to step back. There was no notice. So I'm asking the question, going forward with these ships coming into our town, is this what we can expect as residents?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Okay, Louise Wylder, Wiley. Wiley.
Wiley, okay, thank you. Chairman, board members, I'm Louise Wiley. I've been a Yorktown resident, York County resident for over 40 years. I live in Edge Hill in Voting District 3, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to address you. I appreciate that. I do need to share some, just a very few of my deep concerns about the Princess Lines deal. First of all, I'm deeply concerned about the decision-making process to cut the deal with Princess in the first place. It appears to have occurred behind closed doors. Where was the opportunity for the community to be involved in any sort of comment or input prior to the deal being struck? Citizens, very, their very first opportunity to learn of the Princess plan was by way of a slick corporate marketing promo. What was needed then, but lacking, was their supervisor's detailed rationale justifying the decision to invite Princess to sail into our waters. A Love Boat La La Land commercial was a very shallow substitute for that. It puzzles me also that no environmental impact study has been presented to us, was an environmental study even prepared. The York River, Sarah Creek, additional Gloucester estuaries, the James, the Pecosin wetlands, all of our waters are intimately connected. They can be adversely affected by ocean-going vessel intrusion. Our complex ecosystem cannot tolerate the introduction of bacteria and non-native sea life from global waters that these ships will pick up. The Oak River system and Chesapeake Bay provide the livelihood of The Oak River system and Chesapeake Bay provide the livelihood of our watermen. Think about that. Can we risk letting Princess Cruises jeopardize this fragile interconnected ecosystem by deliberate or accidental dumping of contaminated water? Can the county afford litigation? I am concerned about the impact dozens of diesel bus emissions will have on the community air quality. Daily 24-hour power emissions from anchored behemoths will increase our carbon footprint. I'm concerned about the families who will rethink the wisdom of gathering for evening concerts on the lawn or shopping in Saturday markets, sunning, swimming at the beach, dining on the patios. None of this will improve the natural beauty and appeal of the Yorktown waterfront. I think that there is ample research from different communities throughout the world where Princess has made a negative impact, that upon careful study, I am very confident that when you review that and all of our community concerns, that you will conclude that we do need to stop Princess from coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wayne McKay.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Wayne McKay, 209 Alexia Lane. Lady and gentlemen of the Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the Riverwalk Towns community, I stand before you this evening to express my sincere gratitude for the support and guidance that we received from Sheriff Montgomery and Mr. Green. Their commitment to addressing the dangerous intersection at Riverwalk Towns has been invaluable, and I'd just like to take a moment to extend our heartfelt thanks. From the initial open forum about a month ago where our concerns were raised, Sheriff Montgomery and Mr. Green immediately, I'm talking, as soon as we went on recess, they reached out to me, they immediately met with us to coordinate a plan of action. So Sheriff Montgomery in particular listened attentively during our meeting in our neighborhood, considering the details and ideas put forth by our neighborhood team. And his expertise and genuine concern for our community's safety were evident, and we are grateful for his guidance. Furthermore, I would like to acknowledge Mr. Green's continuous communication throughout this process. Your unwavering support and guidance have played a crucial role in garnering attention and resources for our cause. Your commitment to our project is greatly appreciated. But as we move forward, we're filled with hope and confidence knowing that we have your support. Your ongoing assistance is vital as we work towards creating a safer roadway that affects many people. It's not just our neighborhood, it's anybody who's crossing through there, including in the summertime when we have tourists. And we look forward to continuing this collaborative effort. In closing, I'd just like to express our deepest gratitude to Sheriff Montgomery and Mr. Green for their commitment to our community's safety. Your responsiveness, expertise, and support have made a significant impact thus far, and we are honored to have you on our side. We eagerly anticipate your continued support as we strive for a safer and more vibrant community. And Mr. Green, I understand that you're moving on to bigger and better places, so we also hope that your successor will be as attentive to this issue as you have been thus far.
I don't know if it's better, but I'm still with you.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Wilkins.
Good evening, Board. Elizabeth Wilkins, 228 Church Street. At our Village Yard Sale on Saturday, we had the good fortune to meet a young woman from Charleston who was visiting Yorktown with her two daughters and stopped by to browse. We got to talking about the cruise ships, and she was absolutely horrified to learn what was in store for Yorktown. When she was about to leave, she said, "I wish I could help." We said, "Will you still be here Tuesday for our Board of Supervisors meeting?" She said, "No," but she would write a letter that could be read as follows. "To whom it may concern, I have given my permission for this to be read at your town meeting. Dear Yorktown residents, I urge you to reconsider allowing the cruise ships to enter your historic charming community. Charlestonians know all too well how this will turn out. At one time, the majority of our beloved city was excited and motivated to welcome more visitors. An additional boost to our economy, bring in the progress that we were told was for the greater good, et cetera. Now, a little over a decade later, I must say what a dreadful, deceiving nightmare it has been. Sure, the first few months seemed to go well enough, but it didn't take long to realize what a huge mistake was made. Over the years, the cruise ship industry touted economic benefits of cruise traffic while downplaying the harmful consequences. The boats pollute our air, create effective no-go zones for residents, and tax city infrastructure and public services, all a very sugar-coated hidden agenda. A high volume of tourists at one time will negatively impact the charm of Yorktown and surrounding areas, as well as the historic tourism and fishing industries. Cruise ships may be allowed to discharge minimally treated sewage into nearby waters. Sewage and gray water contain viruses, pathogens, heavy metals, and a host of other harmful contaminants. This will impact your river and pollute fish and shellfish that are an integral part of your local foods. Consider local traffic issues, the prices of everything increasing, and tourists pouring into your lovely town who really have little to no respect for it. This will be just a blip on the radar of their cruise. Unlike land tourism that brings people from all around whose objective is to experience the historic beauty of your community, most will likely not appreciate the historic attributes of Yorktown, Jamestown, and Williamsburg. Litter will become the norm in your pristinely kept streets. The ebb and flow of things will certainly be thrown off course. Thankfully, with the help of Mayor Teklenburg of Charleston and many others, we have finally successfully managed to scale the cruise ships way back, beginning in 2024. I hope your town prevents the same catastrophe we have endured. Sincerely, Melanie Johnson, Charleston, South Carolina." Please hear and heed their words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacques Van Franck.
Excuse me. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jacques Van Franck. I live at 228 Church Street. I'm sure there were plenty of high-fives between you and Princess Cruise Lines and the Watermen's Museum when the cruise ship world arrived in the York River on Friday. What a spectacle it was, with boats that normally dock where the tenderships unloaded, completely cleared out, the Coast Guard and Navy presence, York County employees bustling around, sweeping the pier, blowing sand off the walkways, manicuring the beach, and the tour guide company folks frantically arranging for taxis, private transportation, and buses for taking guests to Williamsburg and Jamestown. I heard that this was billed as a trial effort. But for those of all you listening, let me share my take on the reason why that ship appeared in the York River in the first place. I understand there was a lot of positive chatter on Facebook about how lovely the cruise ship looked, since the ship was anchored out over a mile away and passengers were tended into our public docks, which suddenly became off-limits. But I'm here to say that this event was key to Princess's plan. It was a prerequisite for releasing $8.5 million to the county in 2024, and then again in 2025. Page 108 of the Commonwealth's Budget, signed by Governor Yonkin, reads, and I quote, "Out of the appropriation in this item, $8,500,000 the second year," that's 2024 in this case, "from the general fund shall be provided to the Economic Development Authority of York County for support of a cruise ship port of call location, related visitor support and tourism on the York River at Yorktown, Virginia. Prior to the award of any funds included in this item, the Secretary of Commerce and Trade and the Secretary of Transportation shall ensure," and this is key, one, that there is an agreement with at least one cruise ship company for calls to Yorktown beginning in 2023. That requirement has now been fulfilled, so that means this money can be released. And also, that was the last of that quote. So this fulfills the requirements I mentioned. The second requirement that is stated, and I quote, "A working group is convened among state and local agencies related to the permitting of the pier location to facilitate its development." Unquote. So a pier is planned for this location. The location initially budgeted specifically stated that it was going to be at the Watermen's Museum, but that language was taken out of the final bill. So anyone listening, don't be complacent, learn the facts. I'd like to invite you all to a meeting that we're having on October 29th to inform the public of what's going on. It's going to be at the library in Yorktown, the auditorium in the library on Route 17, 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. Bring a friend or anyone who knows, you know, who might be interested. And Board members, you all would be very welcome to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrew Brock.
This is my low-tech PowerPoint. I don't know how I really show it to you, except to hold it up. Here it is. Good evening. My name is Andrew Brock. I live on Bacon Street in, here in the village. And I want to make a case for the establishment of an environmental office for York County and for the hiring of an environmental officer, someone who is trained to research and evaluate environmental factors, someone who can weigh the perceived benefits of tourism or economic development against the too often certain degradation of resources, air, soil, water, wetlands, animal, marine life, someone to help protect our river, our birds, our mammals, our children and their futures. This is plastic landscape netting that a contractor used alongside the walkway that runs from Ballard to the monument, alongside Swaybrook. Apparently, the netting was never well secured, and as a result, when the grass grew up, instead of growing through the netting, it lifted the netting up, so that when the grass was mowed, tangles of plastic were spit out all over that green. This is the fourth or fifth bag load I have picked up since the grass was first mowed this summer. Every, even today, every time the grass is cut, they're more smaller particles out there. If you walk alongside the sidewalk, you can see it. They're in there. Needless to say, swallowing this material or getting tangled in it would be devastating for birds, for marine life, for other animals, and it's actually a tripping hazard for people, too. And it's still there, still exposed, still hazardous. A few months back, when I first noticed this, I spoke to someone in the county, I don't know who it was, who promised to contact the contractor to have the situation remedied, to have the things more fully pressed down or removed or whatever. Far as I know, that never happened. I believe that if York County had an environmental office or an officer, a couple of things would have happened. First of all, the materials, these materials would never have been allowed. There would have, there are other more environmentally friendly things that are alternatives. And secondly, if it had been, had happened, that the environmental officer or officer would have had the authority and the resources to correct it. And so I really want to make a strong case for that. And then there's the matter of the Princess Cruise Lines. When that idea was first brought to the county, an environmental office or officer could have done the research that would have predicted the devastating consequences that enormous ships, cruise ships, have had in various places. These ships create pollution, air and water pollution, light pollution. In general, the huge cruise ships have terrible environmental records, and Princess has a particularly egregious one. I hope an environmental office will be developed and will make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all I have. Signed up.
Thank you, pardon?
No, thank you. You can put it over here. We'll get rid of it for you. No, just put it down right there. That's fine. Okay, I know one else signed up. Anybody here to speak? Okay, we'll close the citizen comment period. We'll move on to the county attorney reports and requests.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Anybody got anything for him? Okay, let's go to the county, let's see. Let's go to the county administrator.
Three things. Thursday is Yorktown Day, of course, and there's a variety of events scheduled throughout the day, beginning at 8:30. Probably the highlight event, as usual, is the parade at 10:30. So I encourage folks to come out and enjoy that tradition. Secondly, this is the last meeting before Halloween, and so this has already been put out on social media, but as a reminder, in York County, we celebrate Halloween in terms of trick-or-treating from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock on Tuesday, October 31st. So please, kids are going out trick-or-treating, let's try to adhere to that timeframe. Finally, Ms. Noel and I had the opportunity to be at a very exciting announcement at Jefferson Lab earlier this week. We joined a lot of people from the region and the state, including both the United States Senators, the Governor, various congresspeople, members of the General Assembly, most of the university presidents in Virginia. And the announcement was the United States Department of Energy had designated Jefferson Lab to lead a Department of Energy system-wide program, and they are going to be designated as the high-performance data facility hub, which gives Jefferson Lab a second mission. A lot of people in the region worked on this. It's been part of our legislative program for some time. And while it is in Newport News, our neighbor, we should be aware that many of the folks that work at Jefferson Lab are residents of York County, and I would anticipate that some of these high-speed data scientists who will be locating on the peninsula in the next few years will also choose to make York County a home. So that's good news for the peninsula, Hampton Roads, and Virginia. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Mr. Morgan, a couple of things. Ms. Brock had mentioned an environmental officer. If you could look into the possibility of an environmental officer or what we do with each department to ensure that environmental standards are being complied with. And second, if you could also make sure that we don't have any of the tripping hazards of, looks like the fishnet, whatever it is down there for Yorktown Day. And the last thing is, Ms. Taylor talked about a port security. If you could give us a briefing on the port security and what we might expect when boats or anything is going on down there that would call for port security measures to be enacted. I know we put together a plan with Captain Scruggs and Darren and the whole team down there, has been working pretty hard on getting the port security plan in place, but if you could give us a summary of what that is and what that would entail and what we could expect and when it would be enacted. Certainly, and I'll provide a written report on that. What I know about that is the Coast Guard and federal government regulations require a security plan for any kind of vessel that's got an overseas registry. And this particular ship, the World, which I understand has been here before, but the rules have changed since then, so we were required to do certain things. And I'll have to tell you exactly how that's spelled out, and I'll do so in writing. Thank you.
So along those lines, so the Princess Cruise Lines, they're registered in another country. They're not registered in the United States. And as first I heard about some, you know, when we went down to Norfolk, you know, we saw the security was right up against the boat, all right? I'm a little concerned, in fact, I'm not a little concerned, I'm very concerned with, they're going to come in here, if they want to use our dock, they're going to block people from within the community of using the docks. Now, okay, great, if that's what they want to do, that's, I don't see that fitting into what we want to have here in York County, or, excuse me, on the waterfront. we want to have here in York County, or excuse me, on the waterfront. So then, we need to be taking a look with that, what do they have dock-wise over at the Waterman's Museum, since Waterman's Museum's the company that they're dealing with. They're not, they're only coming in here because, you know, it'd been an idea, maybe they could see, people would walk through, see businesses, whatever, but not coming down here blocking off our dock. I just, I have a real problem with that. So I don't, I mean, this is the beginning of some of the things that are popping up that I want to, I really want to know more about. And, you know, if they're going to set up a business to operate with the Waterman's Museum, then the Waterman's Museum better be ready to take on the business, okay? I mean, we've been giving money, thousands of dollars every year to the Waterman's Museum to kind of keep them afloat, keep, so to speak, and keep them doing their, you know, being able to do their part in the county. But, you know, and we've been telling folks that, you know, we don't have much of an interaction with the business side of this, but I want to tell you, not coming in here, messing with the docks and our citizens is not what, is not a good neighbor thing, and it's not something we need here in this county. So let's, I'm going to, we're going to dig into this a little bit more. I want to know what's going on down at the Waterman's Museum, getting ready for this, okay? So I think we just need to know this. And this is just something, kind of, one of the things, I've just, first time I heard it tonight, I thought it was very good. If there's any more of those, I mean, I've been, I look at those things that deal with the ships and pollution and stuff like that, we've been, I've called different ports, and I'm seeing how these things have been addressed, but this is a new one, and I think it's in the best interest to find out about it now, so we can have some impact on that, okay?
Okay.
All right, great, thank you. All right, with that being said, I'm going to take, we'll take this about a five-minute break, okay? We'll recess for five minutes. Okay, we're back in session, and we'll now begin with our public hearings. First is a consideration of a proposed resolution, R-23-141, is an application by Michael Tindall's Enterprise Incorporated to approve a special use permit to authorize the establishment of a contractor's shop with outdoor storage at 2927 George Washington Highway.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Okay?
Yes, you read the item description, so this is the subject property shown here in blue, Zone General Business. You can see the surroundings only is mainly general business, except for that R-20 swath, which is the mobile home park that sits behind this property. Here's an aerial shot of the property. This was taken in 2021, so you can see the, all the material stored behind the building. This was one of the main reasons the applicant received a notice of violation, because they were storing outside of the building, and they had not gotten a special use permit. Once he was made aware that he couldn't do this, he applied for it, and he has cleaned up that back, you'll see in the pictures coming up, how much he has cleaned up. So this is his sketch plan, it shows the 1,500-square-foot building and then the limits of the storage area. The property is surrounded by an eight-foot-high fence, mix of wood and chain link with mesh screening on it. The applicant will have outdoor storage, it won't be like what you saw in the picture, it'll be very organized now. He has a cargo container back there that'll include most of the stuff inside of it, and also have a trailer that he'll have back there every once in a while, which you'll see in the pictures also. So this is, I'm just looking down, the little road, access road to the mobile home parks, and I wanted to show you the fence that sits back there, you can see how high the eight-foot wide, eight-foot-tall fence is. And then on the other side of the building is the chain link fence, and that's the gate right there. The red line is the property line, and then the fence goes up higher in the back. So you can see the storage container and the trailer in these, but also the fencing and the mature growth that's behind this, between this use and the mobile home park. And then this shows that eight-foot fence, and you can see the area is all cleaned up now, he can utilize those parking spaces back there for anything that he would need. So the property is flanked by multiple uses. To the north is Peninsula Automotive, which is a repair shop. To the south, another contractor shop, and then, of course, Route 17 and the interchange for Hampton Highway to the east, and then that mobile home park. And I'll just note that you can see all the mature trees and things that are already back there, kind of providing that buffer between the uses. Staff has recommended certain conditions for this to be added in there, the opaque fencing, so that you can keep that wooden fence, keep the chain link fence with the mesh on it, so that no one can see the storage back there, and it's not visible above the fence line, so he shouldn't store anything that goes above that. And then also, our Fire and Life Safety Department wanted, you know, some additional conditions put in there for maintaining the fire code. Staff feels that the outdoor storage will be screened from adjacent views, from the adjacent properties. There's already other contractor shops out there, repair shops, so we don't feel like this use would be harmful to those uses, and it would be compatible with those, and that the screening and the fencing will protect the residential area. So Planning Commission reviewed this and did recommend approval of it, seven to zero, and we have given you Resolution 23-141 for your review. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Walt?
No.
You have a question?
Yep. Can you go back to that picture that showed the overhead aerial view, right, what is the material back there that he had to clean up?
Mr. Tindall is a deck and fencing contractor, so I'd imagine it would be materials for that, but he is here tonight, you can ask him that question.
Okay, okay. Well, check.
Might have been other things, I'm not sure.
Okay. But the cargo container is already there.
Right, and he plans to keep it there, right.
Right, right, so what we're talking about is using some of that space for outdoor storage, not like what we see here, right?
Correct, not like this. He'll keep stuff in the storage container, he'll have a trailer that he'll put back there, and then he may have some random materials there, but he has another area that he's keeping most of his materials at, as I understand it.
Okay, okay, all right, yeah, we'll chat with him.
Okay, all right.
Thanks.
Sheil?
No questions.
Chad?
Well, he's here tonight because, for the special use permit, because he is storing outside materials, he could carry on his business with zones, the zonings there, just outside storage is the issue.
Correct, correct, yeah. He could run his business out of the building as much as he wanted, it's just that outdoor storage, words don't flow well.
Okay, can we have the applicant come forward, please?
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Which address, please?
My address is 30 Holly Street, Pecoson, and my business is 2927 George Washington Memorial Highway.
And you're Michael Tindall?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to tell us?
Yes, I've been at this location for approximately 12 years, I've built custom decks, fences, and it became a boone yard. I know it got a little over, out of hand, but since I've cleaned it up, I've rented indoor storage space in Oyster Point Park, where I keep all 90%, 95% of my material. I keep that outside container, it's been there for about 12 years. I keep some tools in there and some specialty items that need to stay out of the weather occasionally, when we get back to the office, we can stick it in there.
Okay. You got any questions for the applicant? Questions?
Yeah, so that picture that we were seeing with, that had the stuff outside, that was all what, deck-in material and so forth?
Trex, deck-in, AZAC, Wolf, from about 300 or 400 leftover pieces that you really don't want to take to the dump, that we really didn't have everywhere to store until now. We got this inside facility in Oyster Point.
All right, so that's what happened to that stuff, you moved that indoor facility, and so you got that overflow now.
It's all gone.
Okay, and you just need, but how much?
I just need that container, basically, and I keep my trailer in the inside of the fence.
Your work trailer?
Yes, sir.
And that's, okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Sheil?
Mr. Tindall, thank you very much for cleaning up the yard. I hope you're satisfied now with how the county's helped you do this.
Yes, I appreciate it. I probably needed to clean it up, it was long overdue.
Chad?
No questions.
Yeah, Mr. Tindall, I just got one question. I don't understand, can you explain to me how it got to be, where you piled up stuff back there like that? Did you not know we had an ordinance?
Well, I really never thought of it, just after 12 years, it kept growing and growing, and I looked back there and it was, I was like, wow, I gotta do something.
Yeah, we've had several businesses on 17, especially involved in construction of some type, have had to come back up here because of, it was what happens, their junk pile, if you will, or collection of materials, had gotten to the point where it became very noticeable, and we strive very hard to keep 17, which we consider our main street, kind of clean and neat-looking. So, you know, we approve this, we're not going to have to come back down here, are we?
No, sir.
I hope not.
Appreciate it.
Anybody got any other, no other further questions? Okay, then. Is any, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody want to speak to this? I'm going to open up the public hearing, seeing there's no one coming forward, I will close the public hearing. Somebody want to make a motion?
I move R-23-141.
Okay, motion's been made. Any comments, questions, thoughts? Okay, none, this is motion, let's go.
The motion made by Mrs. Knoll is to adopt proposed Resolution R-23-141 to approve the application as submitted. Mr. Zerimba?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, sir, very success to you. Okay, next one is a consideration adoption of proposed ordinance number 2313. Section, okay, so this will be to propose for the York County Code, Section 15-48, so I guess there's two things here, who's doing this? To amend the county code to clarify that the parking ordinance allows for enforcement of parking restrictions throughout the county. I guess you got that, Neil.
We'd like Sheriff Montgomery to come up and speak to that.
Okay. Sheriff, you're welcome, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been working for some time with County Attorney's Office. We have some streets in York County that there was little discretion on whether or not we had enforcement authority or not. So we needed to clean that up, so that we knew that if we have problems in various areas, cars parked where they're not supposed to be, blocking fire, egress, fire and life safety, those types of issues, that if we needed to, we would have that authority. Worked with Mr. Hill on that, and he has sent me a draft proposal, which you have before tonight, I'm in agreeance with it, he seems to think that that's going to fix the problem, so that's why I'm here, and I would encourage you to pass that ordinance.
Okay, any questions, the sheriff?
Where are we seeing the changes, mainly down at the waterfront or the different spots around the county? Where's the pain points at?
Well, a lot of them is in the new residential areas that we have. When you have mixed townhouses and single resident dwellings, some of the streets are a little bit narrower than they are in the more normal neighborhoods, so you have to be concerned about cars parking in those streets, so that my vehicles or fire and life safety vehicles wouldn't be able to get through it. And there's been some, been some issues about whether or not we have the ability to actually ticket those vehicles and have enforcement authority, and this will, in my opinion, clean that up.
So if I might add, the key thing is, this adds, makes, clarifies the sheriff's authority on private streets. So, correct. And so what happens is, even in private street developments, there's a VDOT review as part of the site plan, and they might require certain signage to be put up, so there are signs that say, you know, no parking here, or fire lane, or whatever, but unlike a public street, as I understand it, law enforcement's authority is unclear, and so this would clarify, when it comes to parking regulation, if it's signed, public or private, the same rules apply, and the sheriff has the same authority.
So, so if we clean this up, do we need to go to those areas and let people know that, hey, or is there enough signage there already, they should be following?
The sheriff might want to comment, but I think it's more the case of places where maybe his team has been frustrated because they haven't been able to enforce things that people are asking them to enforce.
The signage is there, as Mr. Morgan said. The problem was whether or not we had the authority to enforce the signage. This will clean that up on the private streets, as he's addressed, giving us the same authority on private streets as we have on streets that are maintained by the Virginia Department of Transportation.
All right, so we're not surprised in any residents, they already know what the...
No.
Okay.
A lot of times, I find out, these residents don't even know that we don't have enforcement authority right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Questions down here? Okay, Ron, one of the things I noticed years ago, years and years ago, the question came up, was whether the sheriff had the authority to, I think it was, it was support speeding requirements or something on private property. And at that time, I think it was speeding, but it was something where the sheriff, hey, could go onto the property, go onto the, up into the, on the roads, and, because it's down in District 5, and Sheriff Diggs at the time said that, he came up here and said that we did have the authority, the sheriff's department had authority to enforce, I guess, the traffic, if you will, on that private road. Are you familiar with that?
We have enforcement authority as long as it doesn't go outside the boundaries of the Virginia Department of Transportation. For example, residential areas are 25 miles per hour, unless VDOT under the roads that they maintain allows a lower speed limit. So if a private neighborhood or a private street said 18 miles per hour, we can't enforce that. So that's not what this ordinance is going to do whatsoever.
It kind of strikes me, so that you're now going to have the authority to go up on private property, because that road is private property, even with VDOT, you know, whatever VDOT does, waves a magic wand at it, it's still private, people pay for it, they have to maintain that road, but we're now able to go up there and actually enforce parking.
Parking?
On that road.
Yes, sir.
And now, the argument for that would be essentially that if it's blocking emergency response.
The only time that we get involved in that, and we work side by side with fire and life safety, that if the deputies go through there and they see vehicles that are parked on some of these narrower streets that would obviously not allow egress by either our vehicles, or particularly the larger fire and life safety vehicles, the first thing we're going to do is try to establish who the owner is and ask them to move it, that's been our policy for a long time. But if not, if we're not getting that kind of cooperation, this ordinance will give us the authority to ticket, and if we need to, actually tow the vehicle.
So, so does the sheriff office routinely just cruise through private roads?
We'd cruise through areas of, some of the newer residential areas, a lot of those streets are private, especially the more narrow roads, yes, because we get complaints from the residents out there that are concerned about the fire department or our vehicles not being able to get out there. So we do go through on a regular basis, and if we spot these vehicles, we try to ascertain who the owner is and ask them to voluntarily move the vehicle, explaining to them that if your neighbor down the street had a fire or some medical emergency, the fire department or our vehicles wouldn't be able to get through. And 99 times out of 100, they work with us and comply, and we work through the homeowners' association to make them aware of those issues.
If I may, just wanted to clarify a couple of points. It does not apply to all private roads, it applies to those private roads in which law enforcement has authority to enforce other traffic regulations, and that's specifically set forth in the Virginia Code and our local code, and that's, those private roads in which there's 100 or more residences. Below that amount, those are not, those are, those are specific exceptions. Some jurisdictions have the power, 25 units or hub, but we do not. But there was a gap in our ordinance, and this, the biggest, the biggest problems were in some of these neighborhoods with, with some, that were private, that had signs and they couldn't enforce it. And from what I understand, there's not that many private roads that don't, that are fit into this classification, that there are parking signs that we would want to enforce. The big gap that this is filling in is giving law enforcement the ability to enforce those signs on both the public roads and the private roads, that they can enforce all the other traffic regulations on.
Okay.
Correct. So I want to, I just want to make it clear that it's not all the private streets in York County, but it is most of the ones, and the ones on which we've been having, I think.
The ones that we have the majority of the complaints on.
Okay. All right, so, okay, great, no questions? All right, great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Close the public hearing. Anyone care to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move 23-13.
Okay, 23-13. Any comment, questions or discussions? Seeing none? Go ahead.
The motion made by Mr. Roan is to adopt proposed ordinance number 23-13 to amend county code Section 15-48 to clarify that the parking ordinance allows for enforcement of parking restrictions throughout the county. Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Zerimba?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next one is consider adoption of proposed Resolution R-23-127, it's a fiscal year budget amendment from James from James City County E9, excuse me, 911 consolidation, and it's 'cause the budget's been adjusted, so.
Yeah, so, obviously that was one of the reasons why we had Mr. Hall speak earlier, to give you an update on that. So what drives this is, the code requires us to publicly amend the budget if it changes by more than 1% of the general fund. And the arrangement that we agreed to with James City triggers that, the memo spells out, you know, some of that, the bulk of it goes for the operating expenses of the new personnel, and a significant percentage of it goes to the renovation and expansion of the facility that Mr. Hall briefed you on. So this is really, you know, signing off on the agreement that we approved some months ago. So I would obviously recommend doing it, since we are in fact doing it.
Any questions by the board?
No.
Just a question, that is appropriating additional funding in the York County, New York County General Capital and Health and Dental Funds. Additional, I mean, that's like, hello?
Yes, coming from James City County, it's all money coming from James City County to us.
Do we know the extent of that?
Yes, it's exactly this amount of money, per the agreement.
All right, good.
Anything else? Okay, Chad?
Nope.
Okay, good, all right, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone care to speak to it? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and need a motion?
I'll move a proposed Resolution R. 23-127.
Okay, motion's been made, any, any comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Zerimba is to adopt proposed Resolution R. 23-127 to amend the FY 2024 budget by appropriating funding related to the consolidation of James City County with the Regional Emergency Communications Center. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Zerimba?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next one is considered on adoption of a proposed ordinance number 2314, York County Code, Chapter 18.1 Amendment, to modify and clarify definitions and practices as they relate to billing procedures for sewer maintenance.
So, we had a work session on this at the last meeting, Teresa and Amanda briefed you on it. What triggered this really was our new software system, and we went to Avenity, and when we set that up, we wanted to set it up in a way that was consistent with what we thought modern practice ought to be. There's a lot of little changes in this ordinance, if you look through it, most of them have to do with things like capitalization and things like that. The substantive change that Ms. Owens talked about is changing the, the time period for delinquent accounts, and it lines up much more with what our neighbors do, Newbury News Water Works, and also with HRSD. So as far as I'm concerned, the substantive change is on page 33 in the ordinance, where we go from the requirement that we cut off the sewer service at 45 days, and we changed that to 120 days. So we are recommending this change.
Okay, questions of the county administrator? Seeing none, okay, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone care to speak to it? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, request a motion?
I'll move ordinance number 23-14.
Okay, motion's been made, any comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Green is to adopt proposed ordinance number 23-14 to modify and clarify definitions and practices as they relate to billing procedures for sewer maintenance. Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Zerimba?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we'll now move to the consent agenda, item number seven, it's a bunting point phase two, I believe this is the adoption for the, by VDOT, that submission, number eight is Carrington Meadows, phase one and two is the same. Does the board have any questions on either of these issues?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Not yet, okay, any questions?
No.
None, okay, this is not, does not call for public hearing, and Ms. Knoll's moved a, moved it, roll call, please.
The motion made by Mrs. Knoll is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Mr. Zerimba?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, new business, moving in, new business item number nine, it's YMCA sheltering and generation installation. Mr. Bellamy? You're on. Caught him by surprise.
But actually, if you remember a few meetings ago, Mr. Klutz was here, the CEO of the YMCA, and did a presentation about some of the projects that the YMCA hopes to accomplish, and this was mentioned, where we were going to establish a shelter at the YMCA, the Victory YMCA specifically. And the real purpose in doing this is, we need a smaller venue to offer sheltering. We show, we partner with the city of Pecosin, and sometimes, whether it's our residents or the city's residents, it's a handful of people that need sheltering. And because we also use schools as a shelter, what happens is, we can't operate schools while there's sheltering going on. So we need a facility where we can take those residents that need that help and put them in that place. So the YMCA was kind enough to consider that, they actually do it in other locations until we started exploring this, we really weren't familiar with that. But they've offered to do that, we've produced this MOU that you've seen. And in addition to that, the other action that's included in this tonight is the generator for that facility to allow them to fully operate in the event of an emergency.
We're, we're buying the generator, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
With a contribution from Pecosin.
That is correct, thank you.
With a contribution from Pecosin.
Approximately $37,000 of it's coming from Pecosin.
Um, yeah, all right, we still, let's see, Tav High School's still the primary
Yes, sir.
Shelter for the city of Pecosin, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, a lot of folks don't know that. Okay, great, this is not a public hearing, so is any questions of the board?
It's a good move.
Real, real quick, size and capacity of this generator, say, compared to the one at the 911 center, is it same size, half as big?
I couldn't really answer that question, but what I would tell you is, it's appropriate to run the entire building. Yes, sir.
So not just running the shelter part, but running the entire?
Correct.
And what type of life cycle can we get out of that generator?
Well, Mr. Krieger's here, and he might be, he might have a slightly different answer than I have. But when I was in charge of generators, the emergency timeframe, the idea that parts are readily available for that generator, that life cycle's about 12 years. They're good for longer.
Right.
But if you want them for an emergency, a real emergency, 12 years is about the number.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Is this a diesel generator?
As I recall, it's natural gas, right.
What is the advantage, I know a lot of the places that we've had, have, for example, county administration, we have a diesel generator, 911 center, we have a diesel generator, why aren't we buying a diesel generator here?
That's a really good question, and the answer to your question is, there's a lot of supply chain issues out there right now.
That's gonna be my next question.
Right, so the evaluation in what to put in what location, and how critical it is to get up and running, is basically driven by that, the delivery time for generators is down pretty much, but it's not where it was prior to COVID. We're still seeing six, eight months to get a generator.
We, we purchased the last two generators for the sheriff's office like a year, year and a half ago.
That's correct, yep, good memory.
There is another, in this particular case, there's another argument for gas, because with the county diesel-powered ones, we have public work staff that also
Has to fill them up.
Fuels the, all the generators at the pump station, so if this were to be a diesel, it would add to our burden to keep it going, whereas a natural gas one, you know, pretty much works.
Assuming that there's no damage to a line or a fire that would cause the natural gas line to be cut off.
And if it's that bad, we're probably in the main shelter.
It's a different, it was a different conversation then.
Thank, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further questions?
I got one, one kind of question, comment, goes back to Mr. Hall's briefing earlier this evening. It was an outstanding briefing in terms of bringing up the speed with respect to our electronics, community communications. I still want the answer, though, and I think I heard it over here, I hear my house, 2:00 in the morning, my phone's starting to go off, the, bang off the wall, some kind of sirens, I can hear those from the fire department. Where do I go, what do I do? All my neighbors wanna know, what do we do? Do we go out in the street and huddle together, or do we run to Queens Lake Middle School, which is very close to where we are? Do we have an answer to that? Probably, not a bad time to somehow surreptitiously let the citizens of the county know what they do if this ever, God forbid, happens.
So I think the easiest answer is, follow the directions of public safety. So in that case, there's a current EAS system that's on television and radio. So if we have a catastrophic failure or something like that coming in, you're gonna tune into your radio stations and your television stations and follow the instructions that are coming across those. Those are facilitated, in conjunction with federal, state, and localities jointly put those out. That's where your directions will come from, what to do. That system is very robust, it's tested, I believe, daily, and it works very, very well.
And that system includes telephones, TVs?
It includes television and radio.
And radio.
Cable TV, over-the-wire television, you know, 3, 10, 13 local channels, as well as all of the media that you, that you have with you as well.
I just don't think our citizens know much about that, you know, might be time to somehow smoothly put the word out, because there's a lot of crap going on worldwide, and I know everybody listens to the news, watches the news, and stuff happens unexpectedly, like it did in Israel last week, so.
So I think the easiest answer is pay attention to the media and follow the instructions that the media has.
Right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You had a question, is that it? Okay, very good, all right, I don't believe we had a matters presented by the board.
So you, you need a motion on this?
We gotta, oh, we gotta finish this.
I'll move it, I'll move R. 23-128.
Motion's been made, any comments? None, roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Green is to adopt proposed Resolution R. 23-128 to execute a memorandum of understanding with Virginia Peninsula's Victory Family YMCA. Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Zerimba?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, I, yeah, I don't, let me see it on my cheat sheet here, so matters presented by the board, Walt, you got anything?
No more, no.
You got anything?
Yeah, so a reoccurring conversation having, and a reoccurring pain point we're having, are for our neighbors that live close to some of our local schools, Mount Vernon, Tab, Tab Middle School, Grafton Bethel Elementary, as well as the parents who are dropping kids off, they're picking them up, is that the congestion that we're continuing to see there at those schools, and, and some of y'all may see some of the same things in your district, but I, but I'm having, like I said, regular conversations with folks living on those roads, travel on those roads, that the congestion is never ending. Every school day, morning, afternoon, they're seeing the same thing, they're having trouble getting out of, out of their driveways, they're having concerns that if there's an emergency, can the, can the emergency vehicles even get down the road to service the people that need some help? I had hoped that this far past COVID, things would have gotten back to normal, but I think we're in a new normal now where we're seeing that type of traffic on a regular basis. So, Mr. Morgan, at one time, I think that this board had regular conversations, meetings with the, with the school board to talk about issues, and I wonder if maybe this is a time where we need to at least get together and partner on this topic, and see if we can't come up with a solution. I don't think any one board can do it by ourselves, we'll need to work with the service department too, I'm sure, school administration, county administration, see if we can't come up with a solution to give the folks living on those roads some relief, people who travel on those roads some relief, as well as the parents that are also dropping kids off and picking them up too. Something, I, I can't come up with it by myself, but together I think we can, we can find a solution here.
So I'm sure everyone would be agreeable to me, if I could just comment, having heard a lot about this topic and know a little something about it, there's three basic things going on. One is, a higher percentage of parents are dropping kids off at school than they used to. That's just, seems to be a permanent change, for whatever reason. There's two things the schools and the county have in the works that will help, but it will take time. One is, we're leveraging this federal sidewalk grant programs, where you get an 80/20 match to build a sidewalk that connects to a school. And, you know, it'll take years to get all that done, but for example, we just did a small one between Running Man and Tab Elementary. We're currently building one up near Queens Lake, to Queens Lake Middle. There's, there's various ones in the works to tie into other schools, and that's not gonna solve it, but that might take 5% of the kids out of car line that are close enough to walk. And the third piece is, the schools, as they renovate their schools, where space allows, they're improving their drop-off and their parking lot capacity, so for example, I think most people would say Seaford's a lot better now than it was, you know, before the renovation. And I do know that in their CIP, they have plans to improve the whole car line circulation thing at several schools. So those are things in the works that take time, and there's probably other law enforcement things that are being done. But, I, I mean, I think the idea of having a meeting to talk about what more we can do is, you know, a good idea.
I mean, this is the new normal, and it sounds like it is, and it's, and I'm glad to see that there are some long-term remedies coming up, but I guess the question is, what can we do in the short term, provide some relief till we get those long-term remedies, and then we go from there, so. Thoughts you have on getting us together, getting the team together?
Yeah, so, you know, from time to time, we, we, we meet anyway, and let, well, I would just suggest that when we, we organize that meeting, that'd be high on the list of things to review.
Right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, one of the things, Stephen, over the last 20 years, 25 years, is that the way we, when they built the schools, they put them in the neighborhoods on old roads, okay? Yorktown Road's a primary example, and if you live on Yorktown, Queens Villa, down, down Mount Vernon, you gotta go, and if you got a neighborhood like Taylor Farms, Smith Farms, Victory Estates, down through there, and anybody that comes down to Calthart Neck, or has come up Yorktown Road that way, there, between Tab High School and Tab Middle School and Mount Vernon through there, I mean, you're locked. You can't go anywhere, and how big is the road? Two lanes, Old Country Road, two lanes, a ditch, there's no shoulder. So no one knows, I mean, and so we've, we've talked about that, we've looked at moving buses to different locations. You see them, a lot of times the bus is now being parked over in, over at Middle School, and they wanna put them now over, I think, over in, in the MAC. And, you know, that, it's just, it's gonna be a problem, the, the solution, to be honest with you, the solution is they gotta widen roads. Because that's the way people gotta be able to move, and to widen roads, you gotta take people's property, all, for a long stretch. And that's just not gonna go over well.
I like sidewalks better.
But it's, it's a, it's a perennial problem, so, okay, Sheila?
Well, actually, everything that I was going to say, the county administrator already has said, so I have nothing further to add.
Chad?
I'm gonna jump on top of a topic that the county administrator talked about, and we're gonna talk about Yorktown Day. Starting out at 8:30, we have the commemorative ceremony at the French Cemetery, sponsored by the American Friends of Lafayette. At 9:10, we have a wreath laying ceremony at the grave of Thomas Nelson Jr. at Grace Episcopal. We heard from Seldon this after, this evening, it's his church. At 9:10, we also have commemorative ceremonies at the French Memorial honoring the French-American Alliance. At 10:30, we have one of my favorite events, the parade down Main Street, sponsored by the National Park Service. And then at 11:15, we have the patriotic exercises and memorial wreath laying at the Victory Monument. So look forward to seeing everybody there, come on out, Yorktown Day, October 19th, it's gonna be amazing.
Do we know who the guest speaker is?
I'm not, no, I'm not sure.
Usually it's the French ambassador, but sometimes.
Don't we have, isn't the Spanish ambassador of the US coming to speak Thursday? Heard that, or maybe that's a future plan.
You know, it changes every, every time, usually it is for somebody from France.
Come on up here, Brian Fuller, and tell us about Yorktown.
And, and we'll start by saying that York County is not responsible for everything that happens at Yorktown Day.
It is not, we're responsible for, for very little of it, excuse me, this year especially. So the Danish and Spanish ambassadors, I believe, will be here, but they are not speaking, the speaker is